Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the County Commission for Weber County. Regular commission meeting. Today is 28th day of January 2020. It's 10:00 a.m. And I'll call this meeting order. I'm Commissioner Gage-Froh. To my right is Commissioner Jim Harvey. To my left is Commissioner Scott Jenkins. We all welcome you. We're going to start off with invocation from the Attorney's Office. I'm assuming that's Mr. Crockett. And then we'll have a pledge of allegiance from Kristi Bingham. Chris, thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads in gratitude for the many blessings that we have. We are grateful to live in such a wonderful area, among such wonderful people. Father, we ask a blessing to be upon us as we discuss matters that relate to the citizens of this county, that we will receive guidance and direction from Thee, that we will be able to identify ways to serve each other and improve the lives of everyone around us. We love Thee, dear heavenly Father, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the thought of the day? Commissioner Harvey? Time is yours.
Thank you. Commissioners, my thought today has to do with the word leisure. Now, there are some in the audience who would think that's a suit and maybe had one or two at the time. Lynn, you may have... I know that... Commissioner Jenkins, did you ever have a leisure suit?
That was a polyester one. It was orange.
Orange? I thought they were all blue.
Well, but this has not to do with leisure suits. Although there's a handsome bounty or award paid for that picture of an orange leisure suit on a suit of Commissioner Jenkins, I'd love to see that. But it has to do with leisure. You know, back in about 200 years ago, time of the founding fathers, leisure was something that was performed by only the rich. They had extra time. And in that leisure, whether you talk of Alexander Hamilton or Benjamin Franklin or any of them, they would take time to study math or science or politics or religion to better themselves. In fact, they would tell you that in their leisure, some of the best art, some of the best ideas, thoughts, creativity came from leisure. To get that leisure, they had slaves to perform certain duties for them. For instance, to turn the water into a particular area so they could drink or to... so they could have sanitation things that were easy or so that they could have clothes cleaned and pressed. As I think about leisure today, back then, leisure was for only those who were rich. But aren't we rich today? And what I mean by that, if leisure has anything to do with time, I didn't see one horse hitched today. No one had to go saddle their horse to get here. We probably didn't have to go milk a cow to pour it over our cereal. Our clothes were more than likely cleaned and pressed. We flicked a switch to get light instead of having to find or light a candle, and we had warmth instead of having to light a fire. Our slaves were the things that we have now, which are now comforts of life. My point is, is that those comforts allow us leisure or time. What are you doing with your time? Do you still study math or science or politics or process or religion? Or are you entertained? If some of the best art and some of the best thoughts and some of the best processes, some of the best architecture comes from that meditation time that leisure affords, are you actively engaged in that? Or does a screen occupy your time, filling you with different notions and ideas? My thought today, Mr. Chair, Mr. Jenkins, is how are you spending your leisure? And my hope is, is that we can continue performing what we've been taught by some of the great forefathers of this country.
Thank you for that thought. Appreciate that. So now, Commissioner Harvey's given his thoughts. We'll move on to any members of the public that would like to come forward and give us their comments or thought for the day. And we'd like you to limit that to three minutes, if possible. So again, come on forward and if you'd please let us know... Come on up and give us your name and your address, if you wouldn't mind, for the record. Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning. My name's Ben Stapley. I actually live in Bountiful, Utah, down Clermont Drive in Bountiful, Utah. I don't think I'm on the agenda, which is why I'm here today.
Okay.
So I am the owner of a medical cannabis processing company, and I'll be doing processing for one of the licensed growers in the state for the upcoming medical cannabis program. I have approval from the State Agriculture Department for my processing license already, contingent upon finalizing the site where I'll be operating. I've identified a site that I'd like to use. It's in unincorporated Weber County. It's on Rulon-White Boulevard. It's zoned M1. And speaking with the county planner, my understanding is that the M3 and A3 zones have been designated for medical cannabis operations. So I'm seeking approval to operate out of the M1 zone. That's the reason that I'm here today.
Okay, that's a legitimate request. We do have a process to go through. Have you made application for a possible conditional use?
I have not yet, no. I have not yet. I was just granted the approval from the Ag Department. So if there's another process I need to go through...
What's the name of your company?
It's called Elude LLC, E-L-U-D-E.
Okay.
We do have a public hearing, I think, regarding this today.
Okay. It's on the agenda today? So does this cover your issue?
I believe so.
I haven't looked at the...
It has to do with medical cannabis.
I just didn't know if that was... We're dealing with that zone?
I don't know.
Again, it's in the unincorporated part of the county.
We're going to deal with that. If we don't achieve the result that you're looking for, then make sure you get with one of the commissioners after.
Okay.
Or our planning staff, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Staff, if you'd just raise your hands.
Yeah, you can get with Mr. Grover in the back.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we want to make sure that... And that's a location that probably, in my mind, makes sense. Are you a processor?
I'm a processor, yes. And the location meets and even exceeds the state requirements for locations of this type, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Well, let's... Yeah, we would definitely work to see if we can accomplish your goals on that, but...
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate you coming forward. Any additional comments? Questions? Now's the time to do it. Okay, thank you very much. Today, we are honored to do a couple of presentations, near and dear to our heart. Our first presentation deals with our Weber County Mothers of the Year. I was fortunate to attend and be part of the ceremony that we held at Rotunda at the Capitol a couple of weeks ago and met these two lovely ladies. And I can tell you, it was just an honor to be part of that, participate in that with our two Weber County mothers. And for those that aren't aware, one of those mothers, Barbara Booth, was awarded the Utah State Mother of the Year. So very impressive. So that just shows the quality of the people we have here in Weber County. I just wanted to take a second to congratulate both Barbara and Tammy. You know, I expressed my comments with the governor that night and expressed to Barbara and Tammy that their job as mothers is the most important job that we see in our nation, our country, and our county today, that without the mothers, we wouldn't have the glue to hold our society together. It really is the glue that we all look for and makes our daily lives what they are. It makes the ability for us to progress in our lives. Without you and without mothers like you, I tell you, we wouldn't be at the same spot in this world, and we appreciate you very much. I am going to give a personal privilege, and I'm going to have since the... Did you bring your plaques, by the way? Okay. All right. I assume that you might not, but we're going to go ahead and embarrass you a little bit. I've asked Commissioner Harvey to read the resolution honoring Barbara Booth, and I've asked Commissioner Jenkins to read the resolution honoring Tammy, if that would be all right. So I'm going to go first to Commissioner Harvey and give him the ability to read that. So it's important. It shows really the respect that this community has for what you have done for the community as mothers. So Commissioner Harvey?
Great. Thank you. The proclamation for the Mother of the Year 2020/2020 for Ogden City is, whereas Barbara Booth has been named the Ogden City Mother of the Year of the year 2020, and whereas Ms. Booth earned a degree in elementary education and helped support her husband to study to become a doctor and start his own medical practice, and whereas Ms. Booth feels incredibly lucky to be the mother of six amazing children...
I think that's seven.
Seven. We corrected that thought, sorry.
Sorry. And that's corrected here.
That will solve the fight between my children as to which one I left out.
Got to count them all.
There is a favorite, by the way, and just didn't want to create... There is a favorite. Thank you for mentioning that. She raised them with the philosophy that each child should feel unconditional love and acceptance, believing that we treat and talk to our children each day can help them feel secure, enabling them to thrive in their own lives. And whereas Ms. Booth raised her children in a home with a lot of music, play, and reading, she even tried making chores fun by telling them she had a fun job for them to do. She believes that maintaining authority isn't as important as enjoying life along with your children. And whereas Ms. Booth, realizing how fortunate her family is and recognizing the need in foster care, has been blessed with the opportunity to foster over 100 children in the last 27 And whereas Ms. Booth, believing in the value of service, is so thankful that as an advocate for foster care, she has found a way to serve doing something she truly loves in a place that is desperately needed. And whereas Ms. Booth also recognizes teaching children the importance of serving others, in addition to the positive example she has set, she also includes her family in both church and community service projects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Weber County Commission, on behalf of the people of Weber County, does proclaim that Barbara Booth is the 2020 Ogden City Mother of the Year. And I'm going to take liberty, if I may, Mr. Chair, and our Utah Mother of the Year. Thank you. Dated this, it was the 9th of January 2020. Signed by Commissioner Gage-Froh, Commissioner Scott Jenkins, and Commissioner Jim Harvey.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Jenkins?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Froh. This has to do with the South Ogden City Mother of the Year for 2020. Says, whereas Tamra Jones Taylor has been named South Ogden City Mother of the Year for 2020. And whereas Mrs. Taylor has been married to Stephen Taylor for 42 years. That's quite an accomplishment right there. Yeah. And together, they raised eight children and now enjoy 30 grandchildren. And whereas Mrs. Taylor raised her family in a household that included giving more hugs than scolds and teaching more children the importance of reading and using their imagination. Her parenting philosophy includes teaching children the importance of service, sacrifice, perseverance, love of God, and patriotism. And whereas Mrs. Taylor loves to play the piano and organ and has taught piano lessons for many years, she also loves to garden and to do artwork of all kinds and is the happiest when she is making things more beautiful. Whereas Mrs. Taylor had the opportunity, through her employment, to help in the creation of a wellness council to improve the moral, the morale of employees. This program is such a success that is now used by the state insurance company for all state employees. And whereas Mrs. Taylor is very active in her church, has served in several colleges on the relief side and is currently the organist for the congregation, she truly takes pride in her calling and enjoys knowing that she is contributing to the worship experience for the congregation. Now therefore, be it resolved that Weber County Commission, on behalf of the people of Weber County, does proclaim Tamra Jones Taylor is the 2020 South Ogden City Mother of the Year, dated 9th day of January 2020, and signed by those three commissioners. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. We do have a presentation. We'd like you to get these books. Before we do that, you know, I know that your children that have come and been rewarded by your efforts as mothers has benefited all your children. I happen to have a personal friendship with Mayor Brent Taylor, Steve and Tammy's son. I got to know him fairly well. We had a number of meetings. We had a number of lunches and breakfast together. I couldn't tell you how much I respected his public... His willingness to serve the public. And his future would have been very bright in a number of areas. He could have done anything he wanted to in the political environment, and his public service, I can tell you, is missed by many people. But I just wanted to give a special shout out to Tammy and Steve because I knew Brent very well, and he's missed by many. But that just shows the quality, not just Brent, but I know your other children, as I talked to Brent, were of the same caliber. And that doesn't come by accident, I can tell you that. It comes by purpose. It comes by dedication. It comes by love. And we appreciate that very much. With that, commissioners, could we have the mothers come forward? We're going to present these books, and if it's okay, we're going to take a picture.
Mrs. Booth, if I can get your address, I'll send you a corrected proclamation, okay? Oh, wait, I'll just do something there. One, two, three, smile. One more. Okay, one more. One, two, three, smile. Okay?
Congratulations. Wonderful mother. Thanks for taking the time to be here. Call me emperor. Appreciate you.
Again, well-deserved honor. We have another presentation, and this would be... You see the sign or the TV in front of you that recognizes the Ogden Salvation Army Corps? And we have with us Tim Kendall, the Chair of the Salvation Advisory Board, and Captain Dan Wilson. Would you please come forward and make your presentation? Appreciate you being with us.
Thank you. We're honored to be here with you today and thank the commission for making time on your busy agenda for us to be here. I'm Tim Kendall. Currently have the privilege of serving as the Chair for the Ogden Salvation Army Advisory Board. And I have the pleasure of introducing, this is Major Dan Wilson that's going to follow me. And he and his wife service the leadership for the Salvation Army here for the Ogden Corps. And we just felt like it was really important for us to come to you today to express or to basically demonstrate what the Salvation Army is doing for the citizens of Weber County. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Major or captain?
It is major.
Major, okay, sorry. We have captain in front of me.
I'm an old guy. Been around for a while.
Thank you very much. Time's yours, Major.
Okay. Well, we... You know, I get the privilege of coming this year. Salvation Army celebrating one and a third centuries of service in Ogden, Utah, from 1887 to 2020 here. And one thing that we're trying to concentrate on also this year is, since it is 2020, is, you know, where do we go from here and the vision that we have for the future? Just to give a little bit of information of the past, we were founded by William and Catherine Booth, who had seven children also, in the east end of London, which was the very ghetto part of London at that time in history. Now, first of all, go with the Salvation Army mission statement. Salvation Army is an international movement and evangelical part of the universal Christian Church. Its message is based on the Bible. Its ministry is motivated by the love of God. Its mission is to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ and to meet human needs in His name without discrimination. That is our international mission statement, and it's something that we're not ashamed of. We want to serve others motivated out of love of God and our fellow men and meet the human needs in the areas that we serve. Just to give you a perspective of here in Ogden, Utah, and the history, again, we were founded in East London in 1865. We came to America in 1880. Salvation Army expanded quickly in the United States, opened in San Francisco in 1883, and it started in Ogden on May 24th in 1887. And the reason that is, is Ogden was the main railroad stop between St. Louis and San Francisco. And as they moved out to the west coast, they came back to Ogden and started work here in Utah very quickly after coming to the United States. So we're one of the oldest facilities in the United States here in Ogden. So in Ogden, Utah, for about the first 80 years, Salvation Army was in two locations on 25th Street. And there is a plaque down there on 25th Street, but, you know, from historical perspective, people have told me that there were two locations. Salvation Army served there on 25th Street for the first 80 years of its existence. And then about 50 years ago, we moved to a prison facility just one block away over there on 26th and Grant. And to give you an idea of some of the things that we've done this year, we've do social service type work, families and individuals receiving food boxes and food bags were 7,031, and the different... The number of orders that were filled during the fiscal year, this last fiscal year, were 8,367. We have a community feeding program, which we serve whoever wants to come to the breakfast and also have a sack lunch available for them. And in that program, 26,643 meals were served during the last fiscal year.
So Major?
Yes?
I came over to your breakfast this last summer.
Uh-huh.
One morning. And I happened to be waiting for the Weber Human Services doors to open, so I was sitting there waiting, and I was watching you guys over there, and your gate opened and people were standing around, and I thought, man, they're serving breakfast over there. I'm going to go look at that. So I walked on in, and you were cooking inside your garage door there, going right at it. And I was impressed what you were doing. I just want you to know that.
Well, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Scott. How was the food?
I didn't eat anything.
Well, we would have been glad to have served you.
Sure. I felt like I could have if I didn't care to.
It is a breakfast set in which that's open to anybody. Okay, and clothing distribution, our thrift store serves a dual purpose. We also give out clothing. Individuals receiving clothing items last year were 2,571. Individuals receiving furniture through our store, 169. And other items gifted through the Salvation Army were 5,570. Then other services, 431. We also do, you know, a fairly large Christmas distribution during the Christmas time, and it keeps us very busy, along with the bell ringing and all. We are gathering food and we're gathering toys, and we serve both Ogden and Weber County and Northern Davis County. And we do get a spattering of people from north of us also, but those are the main areas that we serve during the Christmas time. So in that, we helped 454 families and 1,265 children were helped this last Christmas with toys, clothing, and food. And then, you know, just to give you, simply speaking, we basically are operating on a million and a half budget over there. So it is a pretty lean budget, and that budget, a third of it is gifts and kind, okay? The valuation of gifts and kind that we receive and give out, a third of it is in our store operations, the running of the store, and a third of it is what we run the operation through donations, cash donations, and what we... The profits we make from the store to help with operations. So it is a fairly lean budget of what we have, and we do get... Within those donations, we do get some grants as well. Okay? So this year, in 2020, the Advisory Board and Salvation Army, we're working on some strategic planning, looking at a vision for the future. We've been here 133 years, one and a third centuries, and we're looking at, you know, what we're needing to accomplish. There are some dynamics within that. As the city has declared as part of the redevelopment zone, we're having to look at those issues. We're sort of looking at ourselves and saying, what do we really need to be accomplishing? You know, a couple of things that we're focusing on is what we're doing with the thrift store and also maybe reopening our drug and alcohol rehab center that we had to clean and sober housing and changing that emphasis a little bit so that we're serving people that might be coming from prison or coming from different rehab facilities and helping them in the next step in their life. So those are some things that we are considering in this strategic planning year. So, you know, and just one more final thought, Salvation Army, you know, we're not an island to ourselves. Salvation Army is in 137 countries around the world officially, and we are serving people in all sorts of types of facilities. We operate schools. We operate schools for the blind. We operate, you know, places for disabilities in third world countries and helping them in learning businesses and learning to expand. So there's a lot of things that Salvation Army does around the world, and we're glad to be a part of such a wonderful organization. So 133 years and opening it up to you.
That's amazing. Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, questions, comments?
No, you know, so often people think of the Salvation Army only during Christmas time. This is a great thing you do all year round. I loved hearing about Commissioner Jenkins' story with regards to the breakfast. I've heard that a time or two, and to know that you all are there for those who are in need every day, really, is really great, and I appreciate your service in our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Jenkins?
Well, I want to thank you too. It's wonderful what you do, your service, you're part of our community of providers that help the poor and indigent and even homeless in some cases. And we appreciate you very much for what you do and want to congratulate you on your service. And as time goes, anything we can do as a county to help support you and work with you, we have a great deal of desire to do that.
Thank you, Scott.
You bet.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations, 130 years, that's amazing. You know, this county is great because of our people, but it's great also from the nonprofits, the association like the Salvation Army, and I can't think of one that's 130 years old that continues to serve without expecting a lot back. And it's up to the community members to make sure through their donations that they keep you healthy, and realizing that the work you do and the donations they give saves money in a lot of other places, because you provide services that we couldn't provide as government for half the cost. I mean, it just wouldn't work. So, you provide the ultimate benefit to this community that government really, even though they could do it, we're better off not getting there because we're not as efficient, we're not as nimble as what you can to make sure that you get the services in the right place. So, again, congratulations, as Commissioner Jenkins said, anything we can do to help promote that, we're here to help. So, thank you very much. Tim, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Anything else you'd like to say, Tim, before you go?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Commissioners, before we move on? Okay, thank you for that. We're going to move on to consent items as our agenda, and we're going to look for requests for approval of warrants, and those warrants are 2382 through 2398, and 446792 through 447038, and that would be an amount of $1,792.43. And we'll also look for approval to purchase, or purchase orders in the amount of $169,340. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held last week on January 21st, 2020, and request for approval of retirement agreements by and between Weber County and the following people, Sean Oderkert, Carrie Senero, Matthew Flinders. And Commissioners, their agreements are in your packets, I'm sure you've had time to review it. So, with that, we'll go to, I don't see Ricky over there, anybody?
Lynn Taylor.
Yeah, so Lynn, would you like to talk about the consent agendas, the warrants, and also the purchase orders?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. For our warrants, the largest of these, most significant, 804,000 or 45% went to health insurance, 245,000 or 14% was a ramp distribution Washington Terrace, 110,000 or 6% ramp to Ogden School Foundation, and 83,000 or 5% was ramped to Pleasant View City. The most significant of the purchase orders, there were 10 purchase orders totaling just over 169,000. Largest of these, 105,000 or 62% for roads and highways for aggregate, almost 19,000 or 11% for ice sheet, emergency boiler replacement, and 13,700 or 8% Ogden-Eckles Conference Center for microphones.
Questions, Commissioner? Commissioners? Look for a motion to approve?
So, I went through these in detail, as I always do, and these were pretty clean. You know, the issue we have here, we go through a lot of money every month, and this is a weekly approval of a million eight. And sometimes when you look at what we go through in a month, and I realize a lot of these dollars are passed through, and, but still, we expend a lot of dollars, we give a lot of dollars to cities and other operations within the county for things that they qualify for. And anyway, it's an important responsibility our accounting department has, and you guys do a great job, Lynn. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items. Gee.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you, motion carries. Let's move now to an action item, which is requests for approval to recognize excellent educational opportunities available to family, to families in Weber County by proclaiming January 26th through February 1st, which is this week, as School Choice Week in Weber County. And Commissioners, we have a proclamation language, if that would be appropriate, I'm going to take a second and read that. And proclamation is as follows, whereas all children in Weber County should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Weber County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Weber County to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Weber County, and whereas Weber County is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, the Weber County Commission hereby recognizes January 26th through February 1st, 2020, as Weber County School Choice Week. That's the proclamation. Commissioners, comments or action?
I'd like to make a comment, Commissioner, for, you know, we happen in this county to be blessed with a lot of really good public education schools, and part of those are the charter schools. And we have a smathering of, smithering, smathering, I think that's correct, of charter schools across our county that are really high quality. They do a really good job, I've been in most of them, not all of them, but most of them, and it just really pleases me to see these. And so, I want to congratulate them on this, and congratulate all that participate in providing education.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Harvey?
Just to piggyback on this, we also, and LeAnn is here, here, but I know we have a county school week where the county elected officials, all of us go into different schools in the northern, or the Weber, basically the Weber School District area, Ogden School District area, and we make presentations on what county government does. I like going with LeAnn to these things because she's a great teacher. She, I have pictures of her in the classroom, and she's really, really talented there. And that with the others, it just, I appreciate the service our county, our county folks and employees do there. So, I'm very much for this, and I'd make a recommendation, Mr. Chair, when you're ready.
Thank you, I'd take that recommendation.
Because this is an action item and this is a proclamation, but I'd make the, I'd move that we approve this proclamation as was read.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation that we just read?
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Jenkins. Before I place that motion, I also wanted just to make sure that all educational, education professionals we have in this county know how important they are. In a previous lifetime, I had the opportunity to visit a lot of schools, elementary, junior high, high schools, charters, ATCs, when I served in the legislature, and I can tell you, I was, continue to be impressed by the quality of the teaching, the quality of the students, and really the opportunities that we have here in Weber County for success that we're giving these children the ability to have, in whatever path they choose to go. That might be a charter school, it might be an ATC, obviously higher ed with Weber State. I don't think there's a better institution of higher education in this state for what we have available here in Weber County. So, I would just, again, recognize our entire education system, public, private, charters, and the higher ed ATC. So, with that, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, proclamation is approved. Thank you very much. Let's move now to a public hearing, and I'd look for a motion to adjourn our meeting and convene a public hearing.
So move?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you. We're now in a public hearing. The public hearing is regarding a proposal to amend Weber County Code 104-5, 104-6, 104-7, 104-8, and 104-25 to regulate the cultivation and processing of medical cannabis as required by state code, and to provide related minor edits to clarify intent and consistency in our code. Mr. Ewart, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bear with me for just a second while I get the monitor set up.
Mr. Chair, while he's setting up?
Yes, please.
It should be noted, just for the record, a lot of people say, well, why are we approving something like this? Do we really want this in our community? Well, number one, it's hemp, not marijuana, so I'm actually glad that it's hemp and not marijuana. And secondly, is because it's stated right there, and you read it, as required by state code. So, they require us to do this, the state of Utah does, and we have no choice. And I just want to make sure that all the people that are here and those watching on television today understand that.
Yeah, this is required by the state to have certain zones available. Again, that was state legislation that was passed that dictate to the cities and counties that this is something that was approved by the legislature, and we're just here to make sure that we, as a body, put this in areas that are consistent with state statute and also that will not impose any hardships on our existing businesses or residents as we place these in the community. Commissioner Harvey, do you have a question or comment?
No, I was grateful that both of you spoke, having legislative expedited in the past, and neither one of you used the two words, "Yeah, man."
All right, with that, Charlie?
Thank you. Apparently, some of the configuration up here has changed, so there's not an HDMI cable, so I'll just give you my presentation without the slides. So, basically, Mr. Chairman, this is exactly what you mentioned, so thank you for doing my presentation, that was great. Just to go over some of the details of the proposal, what the state code has done is essentially said, if the county has, or jurisdiction, has an M-zone manufacturing and an ag-zone, agriculture, it has to allow medical cannabis cultivation and processing in at least one of each of those, ag and manufacturing. So, the county has four manufacturing zones and four agricultural zones. The heaviest intensity of uses of each of those is the M3 zone, the primary purpose of the M3 zone is for aerospace engineering, like rockets and, you know, pretty heavy duty stuff. The A3 zone is an agricultural industry zone, it's intended to be the heavier side of agriculture. And so, out of an abundance of caution, we reviewed these zones for the effect that allowing medical cannabis would have on it. Doesn't mean that it should only be exclusive to these zones, though, so we'll leave that up to you. I've had several calls from different individuals, four different individuals, wanting to see if we would allow it in the M1 zone, so they could locate over on Rulon Way Boulevard. And that's a possibility, we just didn't take a really close look at the M1 zone. I did take a good look at what it means to cultivate and process medical marijuana. At the Planning Commission meeting, I showed a video, it was the, it was a YouTube video that had the least amount of yeah-mans as possible, but it still had some yeah-man, so I didn't think it would be appropriate for this meeting, but I could forward that on to you guys. Basically, medical cannabis, medical cannabis cultivation is required to be done inside. It has to be inside an enclosed facility that is manned, these are all state code requirements, manned by 24/7 security. So, there's cameras, there's going to be fences with, some of them are going to have barbed wire or some other kind of security fence, so you can't just jump over it. All of the growing has to be inside, can't be open air. What they'll do is they'll grow, they'll take the harvest, they'll take the stock, they'll pull the usable parts of the plant off the stock. In some cases, if it's allowed, they might sell the stock for other purposes, but for the most part, the focus is on the tip of the plant, the bud of the plant. So, they'll take that, they'll dry it, still on parts of the stems, and once they've dried it, they take it, they separate it from the rest of the stem, put it in packaging, and ship it off to a testing laboratory. Testing laboratories are separate, they require a separate license, but if you are a facility that has both grow, testing, and processing, you might be able to get them all together. There are a lot of different details and nuances in the state code, the state has done most of our job in essentially regulating how these businesses need to operate from a land use perspective. The state says that none of these can be located within 500 feet of a residential zone boundary, which turned, it turned some of our zoning in question on whether or not they're agriculture or residential zones. Today, the M1 zone allows residences. And so, if we were to allow medical cannabis processing in the M1 zone, we would need to delete residential uses as being allowed. So, in the M1 zone, you can have one residence every five acres. Just incidentally, for your information, our general plan, developed in 2003, recommended that we eliminate residential uses from the M1 zone at that time. So, that's kind of been a long time coming, I think if we keep allowing residences at one unit, five acres out in the M1 zone to perpetuate, they're just not going to be residential, or they're not going to be manufacturing uses in the future. Kind of begs the question that North Ogden, or excuse me, North Salt Lake was dealing with, with medical waste incendiary and locating incompatible uses. That said, as far as the M3 zone goes, no residences were allowed there, but the A3 zone does allow residences, one unit every two acres. So, what we did is we got into each of the A zones, A1, A2, A3, and AV3, and we switched up a little bit of what their meaning was to reflect more what is happening today. So, A1, A2, and AV3, we modified the purpose and intent to say that they are primarily agriculture and residential. This helps on a number of things, you remember the gravel pit operation, I mean, there are ordinances that say you can't locate a gravel pit within a certain distance of a residential zone. What's the A zone? Is it agriculture or residential? This answers that question. It does say that the A3 zone is primarily agricultural, even though it allows residences, so tried to clarify it that way. The Planning Commission wanted in the A3 zone, which, again, one unit every two acres if it's residential, they wanted to see some pretty big buffers between these facilities. They are going to be industrial in nature, even if they're just growing and drying there. And so, they wanted to see, I think it was at least 100-foot setback from any property line, if there is a residence there or one locates nearby in the future, a burn with trees on it or a masonry wall to kind of keep the view of the facility down. The state already requires that if it's within a certain proximity of residences, that they have scrubbers on their exhaust, on their exhaust output, so that you don't get the smell. In the M zones, they don't have the same requirement, so if it's out in the M3 zone or if you allow it in the M1 zone and M2 zone, you may want to enhance some of those requirements so that you're not getting the scent as powerfully. We weren't too concerned about what was going on in the A3 zone, it's way far out west, pretty far removed from anything else. There is one home that I'm aware of in the A3 zone, non-conforming, built a long time ago. Aside from that, I mean, you've got GSL and a few other pretty heavy uses out there, including the Air Force. So, with that in mind... the Air Force. So with that in mind, we know that we need to adopt something to enable this to occur. The proposal they have in front of you cleans up some of the codes on other somewhat related issues, and essentially explicitly allows this to occur in the M3 and A3 zone.
Okay, that concludes your presentation?
It does.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So Charlie, several years ago, before I got out of legislature, I went over to Denver, and I immersed myself in that growing over there. Went to several operations, looked at several of the places they distributed, and I looked at the whole thing. So in that whole thing, there was one thing that I found offensive, and that is the smell. You know, the smell is, it's very, very heavy, very heavy. And when you, they allowed it over there in industrial parks, and so when you drive into an industrial park, instantly, you could smell the whole industrial park. It's like, whoa, what is that? And then when you got in these buildings, it become very evident what that smell was. So it's important to me that these, this facility is well-ventilated, to make sure that the smell from this stuff is out, and out of the building and out of the area. So yeah, I want to make sure it's well-ventilated. But beyond that, I found nothing offensive about the whole operation over there. Most of it was grown in, most of it was grown in, under sun lamps.
Yeah.
Artificial light.
Yeah.
And it grew just fine. There was no problem. It was room to room, but it really didn't have any, what's called greenhouses, like you see on the West Coast. None of it over there was done in greenhouses. It was all under artificial light and hard-walled commercial buildings.
Yeah, and here, under state regulation, it would be as well.
The same way, yeah.
This proposal doesn't suggest exhaust scrubbers in the manufacturing zone. If you'd like to hold off for a week or so, I can add something in there to make sure we capture that. It does require exhaust scrubbers in the agricultural zone, though, where residences can occur next door.
So Charlie, would there be production in the A3, or just grow?
It would be both, production and...
So they're allowed to do both in an A3?
Yep, cultivation and processing, both.
So they can process in an A3, okay. And so, right now, under the M3, the gentleman that spoke earlier, he's suggested he was an M1. Would that be, that would not be allowed?
It would not be allowed. So specifically allowing it in one zone and not talking about it in another zone means it's not allowed in those other zones.
Okay.
Just by omission.
All right. Would there be a potential for him for conditional use to?
Yeah, so...
Make application based upon meeting certain requirements?
In the A3 zone, we listed it as a conditional use. They do have to meet certain requirements, as well as some very specified requirements that you'll find on, it's page eight of 21 of Attachment A in the ordinance. And we could certainly apply those requirements to the M1 zone, or some lighter version of it. Maybe they don't have to build a berm all the way around the facility, but they need a scrub.
So Charlie, how important is this that we get this passed today versus if we wait a week and take a look at the...
So, the way that the current ordinance works today, without any changes, it might be arguable that medical marijuana growing operations can occur in any A-zone or M-zone. It just doesn't say anything very specific. We've got an operation going in, in the M3 zone. We didn't see a lot of risk in that. If we run this, we've got pending legislation. Essentially, we could get something to you by next week. I can't, I don't anticipate any people coming in and applying something under existing code, because we do have pending legislation, so I think you're safe, but I wouldn't take too much time to do so.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioners, action?
My concern, because of what was stated by Mr. Stapley in our comments earlier today, has to do with what Commissioner Jenkins, I think, has articulated well here, and I just want to be very, very careful with our existing customers out at, not just the BDO, but also our Weber Industrial Park, and also the residents that would be included in, well, we have Pleasant View, Harrisville, and Far West out there, all within, you know, not able to see on my Google Maps here, but some, there are some farm tracts that I know are owned by several multi-generational families out there that are still holding those tracts to be able to use in different areas. I just want to be really careful. I don't want to shut the door on this, but on the flip side, I want to be careful to protect the people who are there now, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Charlie?
That's all I got, unless you have more questions for me.
Let's deal with, there seems to be a potential issue that maybe this needs just a little more work before we pass it, but I'm willing to entertain a motion. Charlie, from what I hear you saying you're willing to sit down this next week and revise it, we could have something before us that maybe meets some concerns of Commissioner Jenkins, and also makes it a little easier to interpret. I think the M1 zone, obviously, we need to look at, I mean, we had the situation in Ogden Valley with the gravel pit, that you had homes next to the gravel pit, so we may want to, you know, look at where we allow homes in M1 zones and informing people what the, you know, potential repercussions may be. But anyway, I think that's just, obviously not for us to legislate today, but maybe in the future. Yeah, yeah, we could do that for sure. Yeah, so, anyway, let's, we'll keep that as in mind as we go forward. Let's, let's move on to the public hearing dealing with approval to amend the Weber County Code 106-2-4 to allow lot averaging to occur in subdivisions in the AV3 zone, and provide related minor clerical edits. Charlie, back to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is a pretty simple one. You guys, all three of you are aware of lot averaging. We added it to part of our code about a year, year and a half ago. We've had some subdivisions going in under that, and so far, it seems to be pretty successful. We've looked at the AV3 zone. You recall, we started with the A1 and A2, just to see how it would be affected, and then we said that we would address each zone individually. So we looked at the AV3 zone this time to see how it would affect that area. Planning commission said in the AV3 zone, where it's three-acre minimum requirement normally, they don't want to see it reduced smaller than one acre, and they don't want to see the width any wider, or any narrower than 100 feet. Other than that, they were comfortable allowing it in the AV3 zone. It provides an option in the Ogden Valley for a level of clustering without using the cluster subdivision ordinance.
Thank you for that. My understanding, Charlie, this is allowed now in lower Weber County. It just has never been approved in upper.
Right.
And that's the question I've always had. If it's good for western Weber County, why wouldn't it be good for eastern Weber County?
Yeah, I agree.
We're still part of the county, last time I checked, so, okay. Comments, questions?
No comments, no questions.
Mr. Jenkins? Okay, is that it, Charlie?
That's it.
Thank you for that. We'll now hear from the public, public comments regarding those two requests for approval. If you have an interest in speaking to those, please come forward and speak your piece. Anybody? Doesn't look like it. Okay, we're going to close public comment. I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene to a public meeting.
So move?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you. We're now adjourned from our public hearing, and we will move on to our public meeting, and we'll take action on the two items that were just discussed. And I'm going to start with Action Item 6-12, which is to approve the code dealing with cultivation and processing of medical cannabis as required by state code.
Motion to table until we get a little more information on the things we discussed in the, in the public hearing.
Can we have a motion to table?
I would agree with that. I want to see some ventilation in there, and I would be just fine. Other than everything else, other than that, I'm fine with everything else. So it's not like I want to hold this up a long time. Just, you can put that in there in a week, can't you, Charlie?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so if that's the case, I'll take, second that.
Second that, and I'll agree with that, that motion. I'm going to place it. I would like to make a clarification. Let's put that time certain for next week. We can have that, just so in case there is anybody out there. If you can work with Shelley, make sure we get, we may have to have a hour work meeting prior to that, just to make sure we're all on the same page, if that'd be all right, Charlie.
Perfect.
Okay, so the motion to table's in order. I'll place a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion's tabled for time certain next week, same time, same place. Let's move on to Action Item 6-13 for lot averaging in AV3 zone, and provide related minor clerical edits.
Same motion to table?
Want to table that one?
Well, isn't that related, or did I miss something?
No, so this just deals with lot averaging.
Oh, no, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve that.
Yeah, I don't see, motion to...
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Thank you for that. With motion to approve, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's an ordinance number two. Excuse me, ordinance. Thank you. Ordinance number three?
Sure it is.
Two, because we didn't approve the first one.
Oh, excuse me, since we cabled the other one. Ordinance two, thank you. Bottom up.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair.
Aye, thank you. So that deals with our action items, as per my agenda. Now, we want to move on to a very fun part that we do, which is our Stall of Fame. And this month, we are honored to represent, or to honor and to give the Stall of Fame to Brandy Kiltz. I'm assuming LeAnn knows who that, who that is. And we have a very expensive keychain here for Brandy.
So Commissioners...
LeAnn, your time.
Thank you. Commissioners, it's my honor and privilege to be here today. A couple weeks ago, let me kind of give you the background on what happened in our office. I had one of my employees go to lunch and come back and was eating her lunch and started to choke on a piece of meat.
Oh.
So we're not going to say who that was, because that kind of embarrasses her. But anyway, she was able to get the attention of another employee, of which time that employee tried to do the Heimlich. But the bad part about that was the little gal had hurt her back and was having difficulties in getting her, the meat to move, basically. So, while she's standing there choking, this is going on, and so let me stop for a minute here. And let me talk about an employee, on what they do on their spare time, as Commissioner Harvey today suggested, and what this employee does. She started her career, I'm not going to cry, because you guys are all back there waiting for me to cry. I know you are. So she started her career back in high school as an EMT.
You've got a cheering section there.
I know they are. They're just back there. That's not for me, but they're all just waiting to see how long it takes me to cry. So I'm not going to. She started her career as an EMT, and went on to be a volunteer at the Plain City Fire Department, where she soon became Assistant Chief. She's also kept up her EMT, and she also works on the ambulance, where she can start IVs and transporting patients. She's also attended a bomb class, in which I hope we never need her knowledge or expertise in that. So with that being said, I have one employee who has now tried to do the Heimlich, and my other employee is still choking on her piece of meat. So they, in somewhat of panic, called out for, of course, Brandy Kiltz, and yell, they don't yell Brandy, they just yell Brandy, like all of us have done. And behind the scenes, I'm sure you've, you might know, you might not know, she has also helped other offices in time of need. And that's exactly what they do. They call for Brandy. So on the third floor, we are well-represented with an EMT from the Plain City Fire Department. So, with that being said, Brandy comes up to the front counter. She's not knowing why, because she just had received her lunch from them, and couldn't figure out why they were calling for Brandy, saw the situation, and performed the Heimlich. Didn't work the first time, but she calmly, in her sense of calmness, and where she gets it from, it's not her mother, let's just say that. Anyway, did the Heimlich again, and got the meat up, and graciously went back to her seat and carried on like the day should have gone. So, with that being said, in her quick action in doing the Heimlich, we would like to nominate Brandy Kiltz as the receiver of the Stall of Fame for her actions in the Recorder's Office of saving, to us, saving a dear life that we appreciate. So we appreciate all of them, and I didn't cry, and so there you go.
That's great. Well, thank you. Brandy, well deserved. Boy, I appreciate you being on the third floor. We never know when we may need you over on our side, so.
I try.
Stay close, would you?
I will.
Anyway, congratulations, and we have a presentation here for you. We're going to come down and give this to you and get a picture, if that's all right.
All right.
We appreciate your service for Weber County.
And this does come with the designated parking stall.
It's okay, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for that, LeAnn and Brandy. Well deserved. Again, I'm continually impressed by the quality of people we have here working for the county. Never ceases to amaze me, and we see the benefit that goes back to the public on a daily basis. With that, Commissioner comments. I know that Commissioner Harvey's ready to go here. Go ahead.
We recognize that most of you from the Recorder Surveyor's Office here today, thanks for being here. Your being here shows you care for both sides of the situation that happened. But I will say, from my 26, 27 years of knowing that branch, Hadley, that the apple doesn't fall too far from the tree. They have a unique way of showing care out there, and in this particular case, Brandy calmly just did the right. Good for you. I sure appreciate, you know, your office is wonderful, LeAnn. There's always a smile or a kind wave, or happy people, and you guys are great to be here. You make being here in this building wonderful, and I want all of you to know that it's recognized and appreciated very much. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Jenkins?
Oh, I can't help but comment on this. You know, as a young city councilman out there in Plain City, me and Ken Hadley, we pushed and started the Plain City Fire Department, of which he was a member.
And I think I went to school with.
And I just, I am, you know, I look back to that decision years later, and over and over and over, I am so grateful that we made that decision to do that. That has just changed our community. It's changed, it's given people opportunities. I look at the, a number of people who are full-time firemen today because of it, and it was just, it's just turned out to be a blessing to so many people. And here, once again... And here once again, it's a blessing, in this case, Toiron County, because of her training and quick thinking, and we really appreciate you being involved there. So anyway, I want to congratulate Brandy and this, and you talk about the Hadleys, you know, when I was a kid, when I was in junior high school, my mother got a job at the IRS for, it was a part-time job, and she'd get up in the morning and go to work at the IRS, and then we'd get on the bus and go to, go to school. Well, we figured out that if we just stayed on that bus, went home, that we were there when, we were always there when mom came home anyway, so she never knew. And LeAnn's dad was the driver there, LaGranne. We'd get there and we'd be sitting there talking, and he'd say, "Well, boys, are we going or we staying today?" So we'd say, "I think we're going to go." So we'd, we'd ride that bus home and get right back off of it, the way we got on it. And oh, I tell you, those were great days, great days. Anyway, wonderful family, I tell you. LeAnn, your dad and your mom are wonderful, wonderful people. And so Brandy, you're very fortunate to come from that stock. It's a blessing to you all. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me just finish by saying, it's great to see Recorder's Office, LeAnn, your group, Devron, here this morning. We've said on a number of occasions, a lot of times when we congratulate you and give you thanks for what you do for the county, you're not here. So with you being here, I just want to take a second and tell you thanks. Without the job, without what you do for us as a county, the public in this county wouldn't be nearly as well-served as they are. So we appreciate what you do. You guys have the hard jobs, and we appreciate that. Dealing with the public is not, sometimes not all that easy, but dealing with the public and giving good public service is what we're about, and we depend on folks like you to make that happen. And from what I've seen and heard, you guys are knocking it out of the park. So we appreciate it very much. We wanted you to know that, that we do appreciate it, and thank you for being here. With that, Commissioners?
To you guys.
To you guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And non-debatable, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned, thank you. See you next week, same time, same place.